I will call to order the special meeting of the Verona Common Council on September 16th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Lynch, please.
Alderperson Bear.
Here.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Manley.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
And Alderperson Yers.
Here.
We have everyone present. Thank you for that. Next, order of business, we have discussion and possible action.
Point of order question. Is there a public comment in this meeting?
We do not have public comment on the agenda.
Are we required by the ordinances or anything else to have public comment?
The ordinances identify the items for a regular council meeting. Typically, when the city has had special council meetings, items such as public comment, announcements, mayor's business, administrators' business have not been included. Just the items requested for a special council meeting.
Well, my reading of the ordinance is that we can have public comment at any time, subject to the chair. And I think, I'm not certain, but I think it says that we shall have comments.
It's, Alderperson Bear, certainly nothing that I intentionally left off the agenda. It looks like we are not required to do that. Having said that, then I'm just going to proceed. We've had a lot of conversation on this topic already. And, you know, let the votes fall where they may. We really need to move, as a city, we need to move this issue forward, one way or the other, so that we know where we're at. So with that, I will move into Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Motion to Reconsider Action Taken on Item 11-1 Under Old Business From the September 9, 2013 Meeting of the Verona Common Council. Following the meeting, I'll just say, following the meeting, we had a request that we reconsider. We looked at the ordinances. Mr. Burns said talk to legal counsel. And legal counsel has said that what our ordinance say is that if there's any member of the common council who was absent at the last meeting, that that alderperson can ask for reconsideration of the motion. And that request was made by Alderperson McGilvery. And I believe, I don't want to put words in anyone else's mouth, I believe that Alderperson Manley also requested a special meeting of the common councils. We did have two people on the council request that we have a special meeting. We met all the requirements of the ordinances as far as notification to the clerk, notification to the alders. They received agendas. Everyone received a copy delivered to your home. So we've done what we've legally needed to do to follow the letter of the law. And that's, at least that's what I've been saying all along, that that's what we needed to do. So we are on Agenda Item Number Four for this evening. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item Number Four, I will make a motion to reconsider action taken on Item 11-1 under old business on the September 9, 2013 meeting of the Verona Common Council.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Steiner. We can have discussion on this motion, if there is discussion, if there's a desire to have discussion. Mr. McGilvery?
Just really quickly, under the Verona Code of Ordinances, for those who may be watching from home, under Section 2-2-18 Conduct of Deliberations, reconsideration. When a motion has been decided, it shall be in order for any member who voted in the majority or a member who has been excused from the previous meeting to move for reconsideration thereof at the same or next succeeding meeting, and the mayor shall call for a roll call of the alderpersons. If a majority of the members present shall be in favor of the reconsideration, the subject shall be before the council for further action.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? Mr. Bear?
I just want to say, I think this is perfectly fine. I think Mr. McGilvery and his constituents certainly have the right to have their voice heard on this and every other issue, so I will support this motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those, actually, it does require a roll call vote. Is that correct? Is that what we were just reading?
That's correct.
It does require a roll call vote, so I would have the clerk read the roll. Ms. Lynch, please.
Alderperson Bear.
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz.
No.
Alderperson Doyle.
No.
Alderperson Manley.
Aye.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky.
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner.
Aye.
And Alderperson Yers.
Aye.
We have five ayes, two noes, so the motion passes. We now have, we are on Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Authorizing.
Five and two is seven.
I had six, I'm sorry. I said five and two. It's six and two, sorry. Six to two. Thank you. Next, we have Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Authorizing the Utilization of Funds for Fire Department Recruitment Costs. We are open for discussion or a motion. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As described in previous meetings, we could certainly deliberate over this after we get the motion and the second on the table, if there's a second. But I will make a motion to authorize the utilization of funds for the fire department recruitment costs.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second by Mr. Steiner? Any discussion on the motion or comments? Mr. McGilvery?
One of the things I understood from previous comments was there was some concern about whether or not we had allocated enough funds for this recruitment process in the event that we ran somebody through who was not qualified or didn't meet the physical standards and was identified during the interview process as such. So at this time, I would certainly be open to expanding the amount of funds we would need to set aside. So in the case, I think we were at, was it 45-50, Mr. Burns? Is that correct?
Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
My recollection is that it was 45-55. I'll verify that.
Very good. So in the event that we did run across that problem, rather than have to go through this process, I would certainly be willing to entertain an amendment that would allow us to expend, you know, up to $6,000, if that's what the council thinks is appropriate for additional funding.
Mr. Yers?
If that were to take place, what would happen with the leftover revenue or leftover money?
Mr. Burns?
If money is authorized for that purpose and not all of it is spent for that purpose, it would just remain in the general fund and be elapsed, that'd be available either for the council to reappropriate for another purpose or become part of the fund balance at the end of the year.
It would take action of the Finance Committee to reverse that and keep it designated for some other purpose. If it's not used, it automatically would go back to the general fund? Yeah. Mr. Bear?
Could we, there's been a number of questions about what the city council's power is in this realm, specifically fire services. So could we visit the ordinances that govern city finances and what the vote threshold requirement, vote threshold requirements are for amending the budget?
Mr. Burns?
There is a state statute that refers to budget amendments. That would require a two-thirds vote to formally amend the budget. Authorizing funds that have been budgeted for use for another purpose, the city has not gone through a formal budget amendment for that in the past. And just authorizing use of funds that have been budgeted for a purpose would require a majority vote.
So I read in our ordinances, pardon me, I'm a little under the weather tonight. Section 3-1-4, Changes in the Budget, which says, "Upon written recommendation of the mayor or standing committee of the council, the council may at any time, by a two-thirds vote of the entire membership, transfer any portion of an unencumbered balance of an appropriation to any other purpose or budget. Notice of such transfer shall be given by a publication within 10 days thereafter in the official newspaper of the city. However, transfers between budget line items shall not require such approval, provided the total program expenditures are within the parameters of the approved budget." And then Section 3-1-5, the next section, the first sentence there, "No money shall be drawn from the city treasury or the city, nor shall any obligation for the expenditure of money be incurred except in pursuance of the annual appropriation in the adopted budget or when changes changed as authorized by Section 3-1-4 of this chapter," which I also just read. So do we need a two-thirds vote for this?
Mr. Burns?
The proposed use of funds are currently budgeted in the administration budget under professional services. It would be consistent with the city's past practice to not require a formal budget amendment to have the council authorize the use of funds in that type of account for another appropriate expenditure of this type. In the past, the city has done formal budget amendments, typically when you would make an increase to the budget or be making a change from, for example, adding a staff position to a budget, something like that. But simply authorizing funds from one operating line item to another, for another use that could be funded under an operating line item that doesn't change the overall budget, the city council has not done a formal budget amendment. I guess I'm not giving a legal opinion. I'm just reporting what my experience has been in the practice of the city of how they have interpreted mid-year changes in authorizing the use of funds that have been budgeted, distinguishing that from a request to increase the budget or, for example, fund a position, something like that, that would be creating an ongoing expense for the city.
Mr. Bear?
So can we find out where in the budget we are transferring this money from and to, in this case?
Mr. Burns?
Sorry to make you.
That's all right.
Sorry. When this item originally came before the city council a couple of regular meetings ago, staff's recommendation of the source of funds to utilize for this purpose was to use funds that have not been spent, and we are not anticipating spending this year, that are budgeted and under the administration professional services budget. There's a line item that includes $20,000. When the budget was put together, that was an estimated cost for the city's participation in a fire consolidation services study. At this point in the year, we are in discussions with the other communities of Oregon and Pittsburgh, both anticipating that we likely would not be initiating that study this year. And that's perhaps something that would be more appropriate to look at as a 2014 item. In addition, based on the quotes that were received for that potential study, the preferred vendor at this point has a lower cost identified than what was originally budgeted or discussed between the three communities. Therefore, at this point in the year, we are not anticipating spending the full amount of that line item, and that would be a potential source of funds should the council wish to authorize the use of that line item for this purpose.
So I guess, just to be clear, the state statutes do mention a two-thirds vote to amend the budget, similar to what the ordinances mention?
Yes.
So I guess I'd like to hear from others what they think about, so I guess you're not giving us a, you're giving us a good answer, but I'm not sure it's clear on what we actually can and should do here.
If I could, and Mr. Manley has his hand up as well, we're not, these types of things happen all the time, not only in the city of Verona, but at any level of government. We are not amending the budget here by the action that we're taking this evening. We're not amending the budget in any way. If we did, we would be required to have a two-thirds vote, and you are correct. But we are not amending the budget.
So what that, what our ordinances say is, "Council may at any time, by a two-thirds vote, transfer any portion of unencumbered balance to any other purpose or object." Is that not what we're doing here on this vote?
Mr. Manley?
I don't believe that's what's being proposed here, Mr. Mayor. And if you keep reading that same section of the ordinances, and I think it's important that you read an entire section of the ordinance, not just one sentence of it. It says, "However, transfers between budget line items shall not require such approval," meaning two-thirds votes, "provided the total program expenditures are within the parameters of the approved budget." What I heard Mr. Burns talk about is that this is more consistent with not amending the budget or changing the total amount that was proposed to be spent under our existing levy, is we're just transferring one amount from one line item to another. And I think our ordinances are pretty clear that that does not require a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Mr. Bear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will respectfully disagree. I think that that mentioned, in the sense that you read, expenditures within parameters, I don't think it applies here. What Mr. Burns was telling us is this is money from a professional services purpose going towards a recruitment process. I think that's something different. I think we're transferring a portion of the balance to another purpose, which would require a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. McGilvery?
I would liken that to, if you evaluate what professional services could be and have been in the past, it could be legal fees. It could be engineering representation. We've had engineering representation on multiple levels. It could be clerical, where we have part-time staff that we've hired through the administrative, under the administrative budget when we've needed it. This isn't, I don't view this as doing anything different.
I would also add that, Mr. Kleimeyer, our legal counsel, Mr. Burns was in conversations with him when he did the agenda, and certainly, and Brian's not here this evening to say, but he did tell us that a simple majority vote would be required on this. Mr. Bear?
And did he have a basis for that statement?
Mr. Burns?
The city attorney reviewed the agenda and wording for the agenda. He did not describe to me specifically a basis for that. I did not ask him to specifically research the question of what he considers to be a budget amendment. However, he did review the item and did not raise any concerns or objections with the item as listed on the agenda from when this topic was originally put together or when there was the request to have this as an item for reconsideration.
Mr. Bear?
So how do we decide questions of order?
You mean a question of whether or not it needs a two-thirds vote or not?
Right.
As a presiding officer, and based on what I've heard from the city administrator and what I've heard from legal counsel, is that it's a simple majority vote. And that's the way that I would rule, that it would be a simple majority vote. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, Mr. Bear. I don't think that helps move the city forward, but you're certainly entitled to make whatever point of orders you think are prudent and in the best interest of the city and taxpayers. I do want to go back to what the ordinance actually says, because I think that's important. "Transfers between line items shall not require such approval, provided the total program expenditures are within the parameters, the expenditures are within the parameters of the approved budget." I think that the controlling question here, and I'll put the question to Mr. Burns, is, is their money appropriated in the current budget for the fire department? That can be, as the ordinance talks about, transferred between budget line items in a way that does not require additional expenditures beyond those approved for the fire department. And if they are within the amounts that are already approved, then I think what's being proposed here is consistent with our budget, which I think all of us have understood. I don't think anybody has been confused about the fact that the city is moving forward with a city fire department effective January 1st. I don't think you're intending to imply that the idea that we're going to have a city fire department is a new concept or something that wasn't contemplated in our budget. And if that's not, and if that's the case, then I think that the only question becomes, do we have existing revenue to do this? And I'll ask that question to Mr. Burns.
Mr. Burns?
There are funds included in the 2013 budget that were budgeted under the administrative professional services for fire-related items. The specific item that was identified as the budget was being put together was a potential consolidation study. Those funds could be re-appropriated or reauthorized for a different purpose or a portion of those for a different purpose without increasing the total expenditures in the budget. My interpretation, based on that and prior actions of the council relating to budget, is that authorizing the use of budgeted funds for a particular purpose would not be considered a budget amendment or has not been in the past, as the city has considered its business, that I'm aware of.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Bear?
I just want to be on the record that I disagree with the interpretation, the chair's interpretation of our ordinance. I think it's clear that the money that is being proposed to transfer here is appropriated for another purpose and not this purpose, and this isn't a simple transfer, as is being pointed out by Mr. Manley later in the ordinance. And I think Section 3-1-5 also covers this issue. And I don't see anywhere in this, in our ordinances or the state statutes that contemplate a majority, a simple majority vote being necessary to decide any issues of finance. Now, if that's been the practice in the past, I think it's something we should revisit. But it doesn't seem to me that there is a, at least a legal basis for that decision of the chair.
Mr. Manley?
It takes a majority vote to adopt a budget. If we follow Mr. Bear's line of reasoning to what I think is ultimately an illogical conclusion, it would, although it takes a simple majority to put the budget in place, it would require a two-thirds majority to make any change to it. In other words, we're expected to be, you know, incredibly gifted economic forecasters in the prior year when we adopt these budgets. And that the anticipation of anything, any change necessary can never be done but for a two-thirds vote of the common council. I just don't think that that's what, I don't, first of all, I don't think that's logical. Second of all, I don't think that's what our ordinances say. And thirdly, I just don't believe that whatever the legislative history of this ordinance is, that anybody would have ever intended that we have to set a budget in November of the preceding year, and we can never make a change to it unless two-thirds of the common council agree to it.
Mr. Bear?
Mr. Burns, let's, go ahead. Mr. Burns?
Just to perhaps provide a little additional clarification. When the budget is adopted, departments have been given the authority, or department heads have been given the authority that within their department, that they may expend funds in one line item in excess of the budget for that line item and under it another, as long as within their budget as a whole, that they are within the budgeted funds for their department. An example would be the police department, where because they have vacancies, they may have savings for personnel. They have higher costs for overtime. Perhaps they have recruitment costs, and that's being funded in part out of that vacancy. That's part of that department head's ability to manage their department. When the city, and my understanding of state statutes is that if you create a budget which requires a simple majority vote to pass the budget initially, if you're going to be increasing that budget in total, that requires a budget amendment, which would require a two-thirds vote. But simply authorizing the use of funds that have been budgeted for another purpose would not necessarily require a formal budget amendment, because you're not increasing the total budgeted allocation.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Bear?
I'd just like to repeat that I, you know, I respect Mr. Burns and your opinion, and I think that it's also illogical to think that the Police and Fire Commission or any other board, the library board or whatever it is, could send us a bill and we'd be required to pay it. I don't think there's any logic in that either.
That's not what's being proposed this evening.
I understand that, but I think that our ordinances do clearly set up a process for changing the budget. And, you know, I will respectfully disagree with the chair's interpretation of what's required. And I, you know, I thank you, Mr. Manley, for this debate. I appreciate it.
Just so that everyone is fully aware, in the email that I have here, I just pulled up from Mr. Kleimeyer, there's also a paragraph that says, "I would also note that the mayor presides over the common council meetings and decides all questions of order and the conduct of the proceedings." And that's under Section 2-2-14 of the city code. And if you go to that section of the city code, there is an opportunity, which I believe is right in any case, and that is for an appeal. And the appeal, it says, "An appeal shall be sustained by a two-thirds vote of the members present excluding the mayor. In the absence of the city clerk, the presiding officer shall appoint a clerk pro temp." So my ruling is, is that it requires a simple majority vote. If the body doesn't agree with my interpretation and what Mr. Burns has said, what our legal counsel has said, you certainly can appeal it, and it would take a two-thirds vote of the body to overrule that decision. Further comments or questions? If not, I'll call the.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess I would like to make that appeal, so I move to appeal the chair's interpretation that a two-third, that a majority vote is all that is required.
So we have a motion by Mr. Bear to appeal. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Ms. Ricky?
I don't know the exact purpose for doing all this research and bringing all of this up. I just think that if it were to require a two-thirds vote, I think what it would take is more conversation amongst parties being affected, and I don't know if that can happen here. Because in order to sway people in one direction or another, there needs to be more open communication. And I don't know that that's taken place yet, and I don't know how that can happen at this point. Certainly not in this, in this meeting space right now, probably. But that's kind of what I gleaned from this conversation is just trying to communicate more, to sway people to one side or the other, so that it's not a simple majority. Because that's very divided and sort of my way or the highway kind of thinking. And I just would like to hear more input on the subject and the reasons for people maybe being on one side of the fence or the other.
Thank you. Mr. Bear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My purpose here to address your first comment, Ms. Ricky, is to ensure the integrity of the process and to ensure rule of law, that we're following what our ordinances and what the statutes require us to follow. That's my simple goal, at least with this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I was absent and excused at the last meeting, perhaps someone could tell me if we had this discussion when we took the vote the prior time? Did we have a discussion about a two-thirds vote the prior time? So what makes this meeting and this vote different from the previous meeting and the previous vote?
To answer your question, there was no discussion, at least to my memory, there was no discussion about whether it required a simple majority or a two-thirds vote. Mr. Bear?
I think it was.
The challenging ruling of the chair is not a debatable motion, so we should vote on it and then continue talking, if that's what people want to do. At least, that's what I think. At least, that's what I think.
Mr. Burns, is that correct? Check that in a second. I think if, while he's looking that up, just on Ms. Riki's comments, this is, this is not a new issue. We've been talking about this for several months, about moving forward. We've had, at the last meeting, it was voted down. The two meetings prior to that, the council decided to defer until a future meeting. This is, this is not a new issue. We've debated this, and we've debated it, and, you know, now we're hearing tonight that it's either my way or the highway. What has the council heard up to this point? It was, it was the reverse of what you're saying. It was, it was you and other people on the council saying, "It's your way or the highway." This is an opportunity, we had a member of the body who was absent at the last meeting. He respectfully requested that we have reconsideration. We contacted the legal counsel to see what the process was, and it's different than what's in Robert Rules of Orders, and that's allowed. And in our own city ordinances, we offer this opportunity. And I would caution the council, as you move forward, when you start taking a look at changing, revising, amending the ordinances, just remember that it may not, in the future, work out to your advantage. It may now, but it may not in the future. So you need to be really careful when you do those things. People that have been here and have served here long before, we have, have come up with most of the things that are in our city ordinances. Most of them, we take from other municipalities. It's not something that just came here and, and we had great ideas in the city of Verona. So we need to be careful as we move forward. Mr. Burns, have you found the answer?
Yeah, the information I found is that a motion to appeal the decision of the chair is debatable, but the debate on the motion must be confirmed to its merits only and cannot go to the main question, except as necessary to debate the immediately pending question, which would be the appeal.
Further comments? Mr. McGilvery?
Well, along those lines, then, I would say that the appeal is unfounded, based on the ordinance and the discussion we've had and prior actions taken by the council.
We have a motion and a second. It does require a two-thirds vote, and-
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Manley?
Could I just ask the question, so that I'm perfectly clear? Our city's legal counsel believes that we are not required to have a two-thirds vote in order to allocate this funding. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Burns?
City's legal counsel reviewed the agenda for this, as well as the prior meetings where this topic came up, and did not raise a concern about it being noticed as a budget amendment, which would require a two-thirds.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bear?
And to answer Mr. McGilvery's question from earlier, this is coming up for me, simply because I read the ordinances beforehand, on what it actually takes to, before this meeting, on what it takes to change the budget, and I, you know, certainly should have done that earlier, so I take responsibility for bringing it up now rather than later. You know, the fact that we will be reconsidering, certainly that was the reason for why I went and looked, and why I'm raising this question now, today.
Thank you, Mr. Bear, and I think the difference that we have is, in your opinion, you believe that it takes a two-thirds vote, because we're amending the budget. What we have heard in past practice that we have seen is that this is not considered a budget amendment. So I think that's where we differ, and we're probably never going to come to the same place this evening. So with that, I am going to call the question. A yes vote would require a supermajority, or six votes of the common council, to appeal the decision of the chair. So, all those in, all those in favor, a yes vote would be to-
Is that a roll call also?
It could be requested.
Roll call.
We have a roll call vote requested. A yes vote would not agree with the decision of the mayor in this case, and no vote would agree. Let me make sure I'm doing that right. That's correct. A yes vote does not-
What's the two, what's the two-thirds threshold?
Six.
Six?
So with that, I'll have a clerk read the roll. Ms. Lynch, please.
Alderperson Bear?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
No.
Alderperson Manley?
No.
Alderperson McGilvery?
No.
Alderperson Riki?
No.
Alderperson Steiner?
No.
Alderperson yours?
No.
I have the vote failing on a six-two vote. So now we're on, back to the motion of authorizing utilization of funds for fire department recruitment costs. We have a motion, has been made by Mr. McGilvery, and second by Mr. Steiner. I'll ask if there are additional questions or comments.
Mr. Bear?
Mr. Mayor, I also have a motion to make, and I'll pass that out in writing for the benefit of my colleagues. One for Jim there as well. So, this motion, Mr. Mayor, I believe is a compromise, and why don't I wait until it's passed out to everyone?
I have a point, point of clarification, is this-
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
Is this amending the motion? Is this a substitute motion, or is it a totally-
I think what I-
Separate motion.
Well, as a point of order, Mr. Mayor, we do have discussion, we've had the appeal. I do believe we have to take a vote before we can take up another motion. This is, unless this is specific to the motion and the second that was made, I don't believe we can have this discussion about this motion.
Give me just a minute to read this, if I could.
One point I'd like to make really quickly. If I may, Mr. Bear, I'll read from your document. I move to authorize the utilization of funds for fire department recruitment costs in the amount of $4,555 contingent upon striking Section 6 of the Verona Joint Fire District dissolution agreement between the town of Verona and the city of Verona dated April 12, 2013, as authorized by Section 9B of the agreement, and creating a new Section 6 of the agreement to read. I, I may be wrong, but I don't think that we, as a body, can unilaterally strike language from a dissolution agreement that the town and the city are both in, unless it's described under Section 9B, that we can't.
Mr. Mayor, we had a point of order raised that-
We do have a point of order. I'm ready to rule on the point of order. After having read through this, I believe that this, it greatly expands the original scope of the motion, and I will say that this motion is not germane at this time.
Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree, and I would be concerned about reopening the city's dissolution agreement as a non-noticed item on our agenda, that the public would not have been given adequate notice that-
I haven't been able to describe the-
Just let, let Mr. Manley finish.
I would, I would be concerned that, that we would be treading on the line between possibly non-compliant with the, with the open meetings law, if, if we, again, talked about reopening that agreement. But I guess I would like to make the point, I don't know if it's a point of order, that we have a motion before the body, and I think we need to dispose of the motion before the body, before we can take other action.
Again, I'm going to state, as the presiding officer, it's my prerogative to, to decide, and having read through this, I think it greatly expands the scope of what the original motion was. I also have the concerns about what's listed on the agenda, so therefore, I'm ruling that this motion is not germane. So we are back on the, the motion before us.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Bear.
Thank you. I haven't made the motion, for one thing.
Okay.
I will move to amend Mr. McGilvery's motion to authorize the utilization of funds for fire department recruitment costs in the amount of $4,555 contingent upon striking Section 6 of the Verona Joint District dissolution agreement between the town of Verona and the city of Verona dated April 12, 2013, as authorized by Section 9B of the agreement, and creating a new Section 6 of the agreement to read, and you have the language there in front of you, which, do I need to also read it into the record, or?
You can read it if you want, but I'm, I have already ruled that the motion is not germane. I'm not going to accept the motion as, as acceptable order for this evening.
Even as an amendment to Mr. McGilvery's motion?
Correct, I'm not.
I make a motion to appeal the ruling of the chair.
We have a motion. First of all, we had a motion by Mr. Bear that was not seconded, but I did rule it, so I guess we could go with the appeal of the chair's decision. We have a motion by Mr. Bear to appeal that decision, to not allow that motion, due to the fact that it's not germane to the original motion and far exceeds the scope.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bear?
Thank you. I have a question about your, your ruling. You say it greatly expands the scope of the original motion, and as I-
As a point of order, Mr. Mayor, I think, before we continue with the discussion of questions, we ought to have a second on the table, so that we can have this discussion.
In addition, I thought I made a, a point of order, that we're required to dispose of the motion that was before us, which was made before Mr. Bear asked to appeal the ruling of the chair.
And I hadn't-
And I'm not, I'm not a parliamentary procedure expert, but at some point, do the people who made a motion that was actually seconded get to have a vote on their motion?
Mr. Mayor, I hadn't made a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Yours.
Mr. Bear's motion, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that you wanted to amend the current motion, so we are on the current motion at this time. The question is amending it.
But in, in the rules of order, don't the people, doesn't the person who-
I hadn't made a motion.
-made the motion have to consent to amendment, to a motion?
That is correct, but you have to have the second first of the amendment, and then I can, then the chair would ask whether or not the original person was willing to accept the amendment to the motion.
Mr. Burns is reading as we're going along here, so, Mr. Burns, what have you found at this point?
I don't claim to be a fleet parliamentarian expert, however, my understanding is, there was a main motion, there was a motion to amend that main motion, there was a question on whether or not that amendment was germane to this discussion, or could be considered amendment to the motion. The chair has ruled on that, and I think we're pending at the ruling of the chair at this point.
So what I heard from Mr. Burns is that the only discussion that we have right now is on, again, on the motion by Mr. Bear to appeal the decision of the chair.
And again, Mr. Mayor, before you can have that discussion, I believe you have to have a second. We have in the past, as a courtesy for people who are newer to the process, allowed discussion during the first and the second, but for procedure, we should have a second on the table.
That was the next thing I was going to say, is we do have a motion, but we do not have a second. We-
I would like to second.
We now have a second by Ms. Doyle. Discussion on the motion on appealing the decision of the chair.
Mr. Bear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear that your, your ruling is that the, my amendment to the motion is not germane, because it's too, too broadly expands the original motion. And I just want to be clear that what this motion does is a, places a simple contingency upon the motion made earlier.
I don't believe that it's a simple contingency, when you're talking about striking Section 6 of the Verona Joint Fire District dissolution agreement. We are one party to that, there is another party. So I, I stand on my ruling that this is not germane to the main motion. Mr. Manley?
Nor do I believe it's appropriate, given my understanding of state law on this topic, which I believe makes the hiring decisions of police and fire personnel at the sole discretion of the Police and Fire Commission. I don't think it's appropriate for the city council to pass a resolution that directs the promotion of fire district personnel into the city fire department. I don't think that, I think that's contrary to the law. And we, we took an oath, when we were sworn in, to uphold the constitution of the state of Wisconsin and the laws of the state of Wisconsin, and I'm not going to vote for something that I think violates the state law. And I have to say, just as an aside, we've been here 45 minutes arguing about whether or not we should spend $4,555 on a hiring process for our city fire department, on a night when, when we should be focusing. I mean, I, I fully support Mr. McGilvery's, you know, request to have a special meeting, and, and I requested it as well, but if we could get about the business, business of doing the special meeting, so we can talk about the upcoming budget, that would be really nice, because that's really what this evening was about, so, you know, if we could stop playing the political games and get going here, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Bear?
Mr. Mayor, I believe those comments are out of order, but I, you know, I agree. I'd like to move on and consider this motion. So again, I will move to appeal the decision of the chair.
We, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
So, a, a yes vote would be to, a yes vote would be to not agree with the decision of the chair. A no vote would be to agree to the decision and go back to the main motion. I've not had a request for a roll call vote, so-
It would have to be a roll call vote?
It doesn't. We have a request for a roll call vote? Ms. Lynch, if you'd read the roll, please.
Alderperson Bear?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
No.
Alderperson Manley?
No.
Alderperson McGilvery?
No.
Alderperson Riki?
No.
Alderperson Steiner?
Nay.
And Alderperson yours?
Aye.
We have five noes and three yeses. The motion to appeal the decision of the chair fails. So we're back on the main motion. We have a motion and a second, which would authorize the utilization of funds for fire department recruitment costs. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, could I request a roll call vote on that, please?
The motion has taken place. The motion has taken place, but sure, I'll go with it. So, all those who voted in favor of authorizing the funds, please raise their hands. We have four. Those not in favor? We have four, and I will vote yes. So the motion does pass, five to four. There being no other business before us, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
We have, who made the motion? Mr. Steiner? Did you? Mr. Steiner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried.